I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here on Tuesday, June 18, 2024, in the Abington Middle High School Library. If everyone could please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before, as we get started, I'd just like to ask if anybody would like to speak to the committee hearing of visitors? If you would just please come to the podium and give your name and address. Next, reading an approval of our minutes from the May 28, 2024 meeting. After the committee has a chance to review, I'll just be looking for a motion to approve in a second. Or if there's any amendments to make, let us know then.
Any kind of motion?
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Principals reports. Mr. Matthew McCurtin, presentation of proposed changes to the Abington Middle School Program of Studies, and then after that will be the school improvement plan.
Sure. Thank you, Kristen. Thank you to the rest of the committee for the opportunity to be here tonight and present these items to you. The first thing I want to do is just thank the Abington Middle School Council, who helped develop both of these. Those would be staff members, Miss Lianelli, Ms. Klesnick, and Assistant Principal Sullivan. Parents, Donna Peavy, who's here. Thank you, Donna. And until very recently, Pam Neely. So congratulations, Pam. We missed you at our last couple meetings there. As well as school committee liaison Danielle Grafton. So, thank you all very much. The first item I have for you tonight is the program of studies update. This update is not the addition of new courses. It is the documentation of courses that needed to be developed over time as our population of EL students rose. So the courses that are in the memo that you should have in front of you are Grade 5 through 8, ELE 1 and 2 course. That course is for Level 1 and 2 ELE students. Those students receive two periods of instruction per day, approximately 90 minutes. It's what's in the program of studies. The second course is a Grade 5 through 8, ELE 3 and 4. And that course is for Level 3 and 4 students. And they receive about one period of instruction per day. So again, it's documenting what's already in existence. I'm not asking for permission for a new course tonight.
Yes, Matt, it's the only thing, Matt. There already, it's already something that's happening.
Correct.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. McCurtin on it? Heidi, I'll just give you a second. Do you have any questions on it, right now?
No, I really just literally couldn't find it, so I had.
I had trouble too, that's why I saw you, I was just trying to stall.
I was like, alright.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. McCurtin, on the program of studies? No, okay. I was just looking for a motion to approve the changes as presented. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate that. We'll jump into the school improvement plan. I want to just, again, thank the members of the committee as well as some staff members. I'm not going to call them out by name, but there were a lot of people that take a part in providing ideas and reviewing things for us as we move through. So I appreciate all the help that the staff had in the development of this program, of this school improvement plan as well. I'd like to start with just a brief recap of some of the larger items from the 2324 school year. So in that time, we implemented our new advisory curriculum. That was part of the previous school improvement plan. That was developed as two levels of course, two levels of lessons. One taught at Grade 5, 6, and one taught at Grade 7, 8. Part of the plan that you'll see tonight includes the development of the next two years so that we will be left with a four-year full advisory program at the middle school level. We also continued our intervention program for math in ELA. This year, approximately 18% of Abington Middle School students participated in a math intervention. And 16% of Grade 5, 6 students participated in ELA intervention. That intervention program consists of both support outside of the classroom in small groups for students identified on common assessments, on MMCAS testing, and teacher recommendation. And then also, those students are then supported once a week inside their classrooms. So they're working on items that were identified as areas of need for them, but also on keeping up on what's being presented to them in real time in their classrooms. And then, of course, we have the development of a new report card. That came here a few months ago and was approved, thank you for that. That will be introduced in the fall of 2024. It's a hybrid report card with standards-based rating scales and traditional letter grades. We believe it will bridge from the Woodsdale, full standards-based reporting, all the way up to the high school, which is full traditional reporting at this point. So I'll pause there if you have any questions about any of those.
Matt, is that for Grades 5 through?
It's a 5 through 8 report card, yes. Yep, we'll have one, one full report card. And if you remember, at that time, we talked about progress reporting as well. So we do have a report that will be sent out at progress reporting time that is a very low lift for teachers as far as posting grades. It's a snapshot in time of where each student stands. It'll give a current grade and progress on every single assigned item for that class. So it's a, I don't think you could provide more clarity on where a student stands at any point in time than running that report.
Okay.
The new school improvement plan itself has two goals. Goal one is to increase student achievement through enhancements to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. It focuses on assessment and data analysis, continued development of common expectations, the implementation of our new report card, and continuing the work done with Dr. Basta. I thank him for that, around the ELA and mathematics curriculum work that's been going on over the last few years at the middle level. Highlights of that goal include the implementation of an assessment plan for Grades 5 and 6 utilizing iReady. I will also be identifying common assessments in Grade 7 and 8 and developing an assessment calendar with specific points in the year where we'll be looking at data to feed changes in curriculum, instruction, and assessment practices. Working on vertical and horizontal curriculum alignment, the development of common expectations, continuing to work towards the identification or creation of new and additional curriculum resources for ELA in Grades 5 and 6, and mathematics in Grades 5 and 8. Of course, we do that for all areas, but that's been a focus over the last few years and will continue into the next school year, and all of the work around the implementation of the new report card. So I'll pause for goal one.
Is iReady at the 5, 6 only because, is there a 7, 8 component? Or is that just more optimal for 5, 6?
Abington is going with iReady for Grades 1 through 6? K through 6.
K through 6?
Yep.
Okay.
Matt, can you, I have probably heard this before, but can you just tell, what's WAVE PBIS?
So PBIS is a positive behavior intervention system.
Okay.
So WAVE is the acronym that we have. And we've worked, we've been working towards developing that for a while. I think any PBIS system is probably constantly in development. So what we were working on towards the end of this year, and will be putting into place for next year and continuing to work on, are common expectations for classroom. That's both for work production, for student work, and also for behavioral expectations, as well as hallways, cafeterias. We're currently negotiating with some people about the price of posters. I'll talk to Dr. Scheller about that after July 1st.
Miss Keeney.
I took a visit to another middle school earlier in the year looking at math curriculum. And they had done a really nice job of posting all of their expectations in all spaces. And I took pictures as we walked around that building and thought that's something that we wanted to bring back. The work that's being done, Chris, is part, developed by staff. So there were a lot of staff surveys that went out. There's a team of nine or 10 teachers that have met regularly to take a look at that data that's coming back from surveys, collect input from their colleagues from Common Planning Times, and bring that back to the general group to make sure we have those expectations aligned.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Move on to goal two. So goal two is to continue to cultivate a safe, welcoming, and inclusive school community that builds on existing strengths, increases students' social, emotional, and executive functioning skill levels. Highlights here include developing common posts, we just talked about this, developing the common posted classroom and common area expectations with consistency across grade levels and mostly consistently vertically because some expectations will change as students age from 10 to 14 years old. The development of grade-level classroom communication plans. So what we're looking for here is to provide consistency for what parents can expect from teachers from the classroom level as far as communication goes, not only in frequency, but also in purpose and content. So we'll, beginning of the year, I will solicit representatives from each constituency group in the school to work with us around that. I believe in talking with Mr. Baikowski, our new website may actually provide us with a vehicle. They will hopefully make that a little bit easier too. And hopefully, we can get that consistency there for families as far as communication goes. And again, it'll look different in Grade 5 than it does in Grade 8. And the goal there is to try and find the most appropriate frequency, the most appropriate use of that communication. And you will have some teachers who say, okay, we're saying Grade 5 is communicating twice a week or whatever it ends up being, but one teacher might communicate more. And that's okay. We just want to make sure we set that minimum level, that we're, our families are getting information, and relevant information about crowd, what's going on in the classrooms. We also want to complete the development of our advisory curriculum. We just talked about that. So currently, our Grade 5 and 6 both experience the same set of lessons. And Grade 7 and 8 both experience the same set of lessons. What we'll be doing now is writing two more grade levels worth of curriculum for Grade 6 and 8. So next year's Grade 6 students won't get a repeat of last year's Grade 5 lessons. They'll get the Grade 6 version, and same with Grade 8. Once that is finished, we will have a four-year advisory curriculum that focuses on skills that from social, emotional, and executive functioning, including self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, decision-making. And this is also where the required anti-bullying components that the state asks us to provide go in. All of the goals here are very closely tied to what will become, once it's completed, our strategic plan. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer them.
I guess just as the expectations are identified, I think it's helpful for parents to reiterate to students what the expectations are so if we can make sure that that gets pushed out. I know the beginning of the year, there's so much communication and not everything gets read.
We're actually hoping to have some of that available for open house. And then it'll be pushed out in our weekly newsletter and communications as we go.
And your weekly newsletters are awesome as an AMS parent. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
To see all of that, so.
Appreciate that.
Matt, I don't know if it falls onto, it probably falls under goal number two is where it goes, but it's just, um, it's just, and it's not that nobody's doing, it's more something to keep in mind that maybe continue. So when Woodsdale was up here, we, I had a, I remember, I brought up the fact of their reward, their rewarding system and how it works. I know there's waves, Wave Awards up here, they have different awards down there. I think what I would, my ask would be for the focus to maybe look for other ways to reward kids that possibly don't get it all the time, that maybe there's a way to get, to provide a reward to them for something else. Maybe there's a way, I get the initial instinct, right, of staff at times can be this, but maybe find like a way of somebody overachieved, even if it doesn't meet to a certain level. And I'm not saying they don't try, but maybe just reiterate that home a little bit more.
Right, and I think, Chris, it might mean different things to different students.
Yes, yeah.
And we need to make sure that we account for that. So that's part of the discussions that have been going on. The reward system that they're looking at right now is different from the Wave Awards that we've been doing. Students would actually be able to earn tokens or tickets. And our, we're looking to get our students involved in that as far as our student council leadership and student council at each grade level providing, I'm going to use the word school store. We're not buying things at BJ's and selling them, but you know, experiences, opportunities, and some little tokens and trinkets that we can do.
Yeah, and I know, like, I know they have like Student of the Month, at least on the lower grade, right? It's like if, as you think about ways that, how can we include, try, I know it's not everybody gets a trophy, but it's try to include as much as you can, because everybody can contribute in their own way. And I know everybody's not going to be able to get it, but look to extend it as much as possible.
Yep, agreed, 100%.
Anybody else have anything? Alright, so, Matt, that was it for yours, right?
That's the whole show.
Alright, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I know, I know you've been out, been out for, no kids for six days now, so I appreciate.
Missed them already.
The opportunity to, it's coming back, to dressing up for us as none of us decided to get dressed up today, so.
I would have appreciated the memo, but it's okay.
Okay, I meant, I meant, I meant more the guy, I meant the guy scenario here. I meant more the guy scenario this time.
So I, I don't know if this is the time or the place to do this, but I just want to on record formally thank Mr. Schaefer for his guidance over the last 15 years.
There's no better time, we're all going to take our turn later, so.
It's meant a lot to me personally, and I know you know that, but I want America to know that, so.
Thank you, Matt. Up next is Dr. Mich, so for the last time, reported the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Michellea for consideration of end-of-year budget transfer.
That was kind of weird, thank you.
Wait till September, August.
I guess, yep. So I have for you our final salary and expense allocation. If you remember, in the fall, you vote an initial salary and expense. And then as we balance the books through the year, we come up, we hope we're close, and we are very close. So at this time, I'd like to request a $216,000 transfer from the salary account line to the expense account line in the FY '24 budget. And that reflects all save, all spending between now and June, but the entire year up to June 30th.
I'd just like to make the general statements so everybody knows that this is not increasing any budget anywhere. It's just a matter of aligning it correctly to where it needs to go.
Just the allocation, yep.
And we're within 1% of the budget, which is pretty amazing.
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
A lot of work in Lynette and Sarah. And they do a great job managing where we are, and I appreciate the work that they do.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Michellea? So we're looking for a motion to approve the transfer as noted in the memo from Dr. Michellea.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody jot the time down right now. New business and establishing of next school committee meeting date, August 27, 2024, at 7:00 PM here, which is the day before the first day of school next year. Moving along. Just some dates to remember. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 19, all school buildings and offices are closed in observance of June 13. On Thursday, July 4, and Friday, July 5, all buildings and offices will be closed in observance of the 4th of July holiday. And on Monday, July 8, the summer school and the extended school year program will begin. So as we've reached the end of our agenda, obviously, everybody knows it's Mr. Schaefer's last meeting tonight as Superintendent of Schools. His last day will be in 12 days, give or take. I'd like, I've, I've given everybody in the committee the opportunity, if they would like to say whatever they, whatever words they would like personally to Mr. Schaefer, I'm going to give you guys the opportunity to say it here, say it at the podium. Whatever you would like to do, it's completely up to you. I am going to ask Mrs. Grafton, if she would go first, though.
I'm going to step up to the podium so that I can look at you as I read from my paper. I don't know if I've stood up here before. Trying to remember. The first time I met you, I came to a school committee meeting with my next-door neighbor. Eager new moms who cared about their kids' education. We showed up and at the end of the meeting, approached the bench, and told the then-school committee members that we wanted to help. We had no plan, we just knew we wanted to get involved. They laughed at us and told us the time for public comment was at the beginning of the meeting, and told us to join the PTO. Well, I love the PTO and was already a member, and I wanted to be involved in way more than what the PTO does. So my next step was to show up at your door with a laundry list of topics, of agenda items that I was hoping were already happening or would like to see happen for my kids as they went through the Abington Public Schools. You welcomed me into your office, offered me a seat at your table. And from that second, I knew it was going to be a great, beautiful partnership. You have so many positive attributes, but for me, your greatest is making everyone feel welcome and heard. That feeling that I had on the first day I marched myself into the Frollo and have had ever since. You can accomplish great things if you make people feel welcome and heard. And wow, do you have a long list of great things. I could go on forever. I'm a very sentimental sap, but I'll wrap it up with two final thoughts. Sorry. Thank you for the overwhelmingly positive experience I've had on school committee. It has been so fulfilling that I wish I could do it as a career. I would give up my job in a second if it meant I could be paid to spend my days with you, Felicia, the administrative teams, and teachers at all our schools chatting about good teaching and learning, best practices, and what we can do as a district to continue improving. You made me feel welcome, heard, and most importantly, at home. And for that, I will forever be grateful. Lastly, I hope every student, caregiver, staff member, town employee, school committee member, anyone who has ever had anything to do with the Abington Public Schools while you've been superintendent, knows how lucky they were. You are one of a kind, a calm, compassionate, stand-up human in a society that hasn't been as calm or compassionate in return. Every school would have been lucky to have you, but you stayed with us and created an educational community where what is in the kid's best interest is the question asked before making every decision. Oh, how lucky we have been. Thank you for years and years of putting Abington kids first.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you.
I don't want to follow that.
Jerk.
I'm grabbing her, go first. I do have just a couple words, but I don't want to follow Danielle, but I will. And I'm just going to sit here. Peter, you've been an incredible leader for our district for the last few decades. I've always felt comfortable coming to you with questions, like Danielle said, welcoming me with open arms into your office to have a dialogue about anything. I think one of your most admirable qualities is your ability to remain calm and level-headed while making your informed decisions. You don't take decisions within our district lightly, and you always think about students first. Thank you for your dedication and perseverance through unprecedented challenges at the Abington Public Schools and within the nation. The impact you've had on our schools and our educators will abound for years to come. Although your shoes are enormous, I'm confident you've helped Felicia prepare to succeed in this role going forward. Enjoy your retirement and the ability to enjoy and disconnect regardless of weather, bus detours, or viruses circulating.
Thank you, Melanie.
Do you want to go, Heidi?
Would you like me to go? Pam, did you want to go?
No, I'll let you go first.
It's up to you.
Okay.
If people don't mind, I'm just going to grab my phone for a minute because this is part of.
Go ahead.
So, two things. And, well, Peter, you would know of these events because you were there. So this is more to kind of share with people what I've gone through with you. But it's, the first one is true story. I had been on school committee for, I don't know, four and a half minutes. And one of my kids had been invited to speak at a conference. So there I was in Mashpee, knowing almost nobody, doing my level best to support my child and not pass out with panic. And all of a sudden, I get a text on my phone, and it is this amazing, beautiful picture of my child with the words, "She's doing us proud." And I thought in that moment, two things. A, this is a person who cares deeply about all of our kids as much as if they were his own. B, I'm not entirely sure if this is Peter Schaefer or not, and I don't know if I'm supposed to call him Peter, Mr. Schaefer. I don't know how to put him in my phone and help, which is why for the last three and a half, four years, you have true story been in my phone as Peter Schaefer, question mark. So that is part A. Part B is actually part the first. And I had texted this to Chris. October of 2016, I was walking my girls to school along with a few other little friends. We were celebrating a birthday, and we were having a birthday hat parade on the walk to school. Peter stopped, asked if he could take a picture, took a step back at my look of confusion and horror, introduced himself as the superintendent, and then explained why he stopped and why he wanted a picture. Yes, it's on Instagram, please do yourself a favor and do not look for it, it's not flattering. So, when he insisted, I stepped into the picture, my thought bubble burst, and it was obvious on my face. He said, "You hate me, don't you?" And I looked him right in the eye and said, "Yup, little bit." And that's how my girls came to start calling Peter "The Man Mama Hates." There's more to the story, there always is. But that day actually became a day our lives were enriched because that was the day we met a man who puts others first, who truly listens, and who leads with compassion. I, for one, feel like I have become a better person for sharing a table, sharing a space, for sharing conversation, knowing that I could speak to you in utter confidence because I never heard you say anything bad about another human being, even on the very worst of days. So thank you for putting our trust in our lives in your, in your hands. And thank you for all you've given, not just my family personally, but all of the families in our community and others.
Thank you, Heidi.
Oh boy, alright. Going after that one.
I gotta go, I have to go after all of them.
Okay, so I'm just going to be brief, as I know, if I can read this. Because I'll be just repeating many of the fantastic accomplishments that you have made over the years. I just want to say thank you to everything you have done for the students, staff, and the community of Abington. Your impact on everyone has been truly immeasurable. But I have one piece of advice for you as you journey into retirement. If you ever leave voice messages to large groups of people, please make sure at the end of the call, you leave something such as, "Thank you, have a wonderful day, peace out," just something. Because although we loved receiving these calls, sometimes we were left wondering if there was still more to be argued. And also, I have a funny story of when we first met. I don't know if you remember, at Center School. It was pouring rain out, I had no idea who you were, and I was giving you my umbrella to go to your car.
Thank you.
But you said you didn't need it, so.
Thanks, Pam. So, I, I, so two weeks ago, when we, we had your retirement open house, I did this whole thing. I couldn't do that twice, right? I couldn't make up two different things, I didn't want to read the whole thing again. So it's on Abington Camp, if anybody wants to go read it the first time. But from a personal perspect, that was from a personal perspective, this made me think of it as Danielle started. The first time I think I met you was, I, the first school committee I came to, just like Danielle, it was discussion about the school start times after this building was going to be opened. What were the school start times going to be? And I remembered seeing the talk about, and I had a kindergartner and, not even in preschool yet, but I just knew that, my wife and I both worked. And a lot of the discussion I saw was around like all the times of how you could get from one school to pick up somebody else. And I remember going like, I'm going to go and just give the perspective of two people work, and I had to catch a train to Boston, so how are we going to figure this out? And I remember talking there and giving my opinion. And then afterwards, I still have the email that I find every now and then, writing to you and Felicia, and just thanking you for your time, and letting you know that I wasn't going to go to the follow-up meeting because I could see where it was going to go, and I was okay with that. I just wanted to get my, the opinion of those people out there and try to work with them, make the thought process. I think it was then that I knew that I could be part of this, maybe for the simple fact that I knew if I didn't get it the right way, I could still be okay with it and go from there. Since joining the committee seven-plus years ago, I mean, we've gone through things that none of us would have ever imagined. We obviously had family tragedies, we got through a pandemic together. For five of the years, I've been honored by the committee to be elected as the chair. And we've had plenty of meetings where you and I have sat down discussing the agenda, discussed other things that were going on, how to get through certain things that were going on, certain things that might come our way, how to handle a meeting in an auditorium with about 150 people that were both angry for the different, the same reason, but on different sides. But having you there as part of it, I knew we would get through it. And you told me the other day we would have got through it anyway, and we would have. We would have figured out a way to get through it, but it would not nearly have been as easy and as clean as it was without your support throughout the entire thing. So, I just want to end, I want you to enjoy your retirement, enjoy time with the kids. Don't drive Andrea too crazy. But over the last seven years, I know that I have also gained a friend beyond the role that we both share with the school committee, so I'm going to cherish that. And I know I'm going to keep your number and not have to worry about that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the members of the committee. Did you, I don't want to, I don't put you on the spot, but you can.
If I can.
Yeah, you can. Whatever you want, but I don't want to.
Brief, I just, I'm, I'm the one that's grateful to all of you and all the people that I work with. And over time, over the years, because they're just beautiful human beings that work for kids and care. And any of the successes that the school department has had have been a combination of all those people who work hard for kids, whether it's our school committee, or our administrators, or our teachers, or paraprofessionals, bus drivers, it's just, to be a part of something so beautiful, trying to make the world a better place, doing right and good in the world for our kids, has been a gift for me. So it's, I feel, I feel uncomfortable because I'm grateful to all of you. And I appreciate the relationships and the friendships. They've been good for me both professionally and personally, and I've enjoyed them. And I, I look forward. And I, I look forward to enjoying them more and hearing about all of your successes as individuals, and your families, and the successes of the school department, especially under really good, thoughtful, strong leadership and a team of people with Felicia, who just care deeply about the working kids. So, thank you. I'm the one that needs to thank you all.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your years of service here. We all appreciate it very much. And normally, I would give this opportunity to you, but I don't think the law allows me to give, let you make the next motion. So for the final time for this school year, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody have a fantastic summer, and quick public service announcement. The senior center is open as a cooling center on Thursday, if this somehow airs before then, and anybody gets to see it. So, thank you very much.